Is everybody here so we can start our presenters? Let's see, Lynn.
Yes, sir, we're ready.
Deborah Taylor, is she here?
Yes, Deborah.
Okay, I got you.
Yes, she's here.
Okay.
You don't have too many more, you're at the end.
I hear you. Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody here for our four o'clock budget meeting. It's a pleasure to see everyone. We've got three of our presenters here to start and we will at this time ask Ms. Deborah Taylor with Families in Transition to please join us and welcome Ms. Taylor.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, good to see you.
Good to see you too. Thank you council members and everyone. I'm reading this letter for Jennifer Coleman, she could not be here today. It says they're council members. I'm writing to express our heartfelt gratitude to Jasper County Council for considering families in transition as a recipient of the 30,000 grant. We are deeply honored and appreciative of your support. I would expressly like to extend out thanks to Ms. Taylor for her unwavering dedication and leadership. Her efforts have been instrumental in bringing attention to the critical issue of homelessness in Jasper County. Ms. Taylor will be speaking on my behalf representing FIT and our collaborative gratitude for your generous consideration. FIT is a committee comprised of local agencies working collaboratively to assist homeless families and individuals in our community. Our goal is to keep people housed by providing essential services and resources ensuring that they have the support they need to achieve stability and independence. This generous grant will significantly enhance our ability to make a positive impact on the lives of those who we serve. With your support, we can continue to develop and implement effective strategies to combat homelessness and improve the quality of life for families and individuals in Jasper County. Thank you once again for your commitment to our cause and recognizing the importance of the work we do. We look forward to continuing our partnership with the Jasper County Council and making a lasting difference in our community. Walmart's Jennifer Coleman, FIT Director, Families in Transition.
Thank you ma'am, anything else you'd like to add or any information? Ms. Clark, any questions for Ms. Taylor?
No questions.
No questions.
Mr. Kim?
No, I've been, I do attend the meetings.
Yes, sir, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And next, one of my all-time favorites, Ms. Lynn Boils with the Jasper Soul and Water Conservation District, welcome Ms. Boils, it's a pleasure to see you.
Thank you for letting me come back up here again and see all of you and thank you for all that y'all do for the Conservation District and Keep Jasper County Beautiful. I'm trying to make this really quick and talk about the Conservation District and the Blue Hare and Nature Center first because we have acquired $4,700 for them and what that does is it goes towards the Blue Hare and Nature Center and of course, y'all can hear me, can't you?
Well, you're speaking into the microphone because we're being recorded.
Okay. Sorry. But also, not only do y'all support us through the budget, but you also support us through the accommodation tax and I can tell you in September, I will be at the Blue Hare and Nature Center for 11 years and we have continued, I know it's crazy, I can't believe that, but we have continued to assist landowners with conservation technical assistance to put conservation on the ground. We also go into the schools with presentations on litter, recycling, container gardening and when I'm talking about container gardening, we went into Royal Live Oaks this year and Hardyville Elementary and started a container garden and at Royal Live Oaks, they even cooked the vegetables for us, which was just wonderful. And we also have received, I did two grants for the Ag in the classroom and that was for Royal Live Oaks and Hardyville Elementary and that was something that we were real proud of. We also paid out over $30,000 in applied conservation practices for conservation cover, tree shrubs, planting trees, livestock, fencing for livestock and applied technical assistance. We sponsored the Clemson Extension Leadership Program at the Blue Hare and Nature Center and they had 12 students participating from schools all over Jasper County and I will definitely brag on Clemson Extension, it was a fabulous program, I was really proud of these young people. We sponsored four Hunter's Education classes and we partnered with Clemson Extension for several classes that they have and also we attended Jasper County's Better Management Practices for developers and landowners for y'all's comprehensive plan. The fishing rodeo was a great success, of course, the numbers have kind of declined, I don't know, I guess everybody's fishing in the rivers now, I have no idea. I do want to tell you something that I am very proud of, I don't know if y'all know this, but I'm an old hotelier. I ran convention hotels for years and years and years before I came back to South Carolina and I have become very, very active with the Welcome Centers and of course, we have used state tax money to advertise in the Welcome Centers and for the last two years, I participated in their Tourism Week and that has been phenomenal because of, I'm sure y'all know this, the Hardyville Tour, I mean the Hardyville Welcome Center sees up to 10,000 people a day in their busy season and last week, I think it was last week, we had Tourism Week and I went down there and not only do I give out information for the Blue Heron, but I also push Jasper County and this year, we did a breakfast. I sponsored a breakfast, the Blue Hare and Nature Center did, it eats and sweets and Ms. Clark and Mr. Kemp attended and the Ridgeland Town Council attended and all of the managers for the Welcome Centers attended and y'all, they were thrilled. I mean, we have gotten so much business from that and it's picked up my motor coach business, which is phenomenal and I'm really thrilled with that because I think that we've got a lot of things in Jasper County to offer and you know, I'm so pro Jasper County, so you know, I'm pushing it all the time, but the Welcome Center is, you know, that's our ticket right there, we can bring in more tourism. So, that's what we do at the Blue Hare and Nature Center and the Conservation District with our funds that y'all are so gracious to hand to us. I think y'all are probably very familiar with the Keep Jasper Beautiful program. It has grown so much till I'm dizzy, I will tell y'all, it is phenomenal and I'm really, really pleased with the comments and I know we're always going to have negative because we're always going to have litter, but the comments that I have received from people from the litter crew that y'all sponsored for us has been phenomenal and we now have 32 adopt-a-highway groups and probably out of the 32, we have about 10 to 12 that pick up monthly. You're only required to pick up four times a year, but they're growing by leaps and bounds and I'm so proud of them and most of my litter crew, I meant the adopt-a-highway, they're in the southern part of the county, but that's okay, we still have some small ones in the northern part. In fact, I just sent y'all Facebook of the Grays Girls, they picked up over the weekend, so I was real proud of that. One thing I do want to tell y'all that is kind of out of the box with litter is I got a call about a month ago from a group that they called and they told me that they were looking for a nonprofit to partner with and they had 100 volunteers that they wanted to do something. Well, y'all know right then, I didn't even think twice, I said, "Sign me up." They were staying at the new Savannah Lakes RV Park in Hardyville and they are called "Switch It Up." I have not posted this on Facebook yet because I need to get some more information from them. I had 100 volunteers on April 27th to volunteer in Hardyville, I put them on three of the worst roads that we have, they picked up 2.8 tons of litter and Hardy, the city of Hardyville picked up the bags for me and disposed of those, y'all, that was phenomenal. And this group did not want one thing, they didn't even say, "Make sure you put us on social media, make sure you write us a letter" or anything, so that was just a plus for us and I was really glad that we could, we could do that for them and they could do it for us. The litter program, it like I said, is growing by leaps and bounds and we were once again nominated for the President Circle. We are a very, very small group compared to like Charleston, Spartanburg, Greenville and all of them and I can tell y'all, we pick up more litter than them, our volunteers do and hopefully, and we've been planning this for a while, but I've talked to the municipalities and all, hopefully, I will have an awards banquet this year, a lunch or a breakfast or something and I would love for y'all to come and give out the awards because I think that would mean a lot to our group and I'm trying to think if there was, oh, one other thing. I work really closely with law enforcement and we had planned a Tarpet campaign a couple of weeks ago, my tarps did not come in and so we will be planning that in the next month and we will go to the Hap Hazard site and the Hardyville site and we'll give out tarps, we'll give out litter prevention cards and hopefully, maybe make an impact on that. And I think this year, we did about over $10,000 in litter fines, so.
I know when we did the, I got some stats from you earlier in the year when we had our State of the County Breakfast, looking at, we got over 2,000 volunteers and I forget how many tons of material, trash you guys had picked up, but you adopt-a-highway programs and everything, it's really amazing from where you guys started to where you are today with the whole program, Ms. Boils, is phenomenal and you've really been the backbone driving that and making it what it is, so thank you for what you've done and what you're continuing to do.
Well, thank y'all for your support. We, to date, we picked up 49 tons of litter, that's just with volunteers. We picked up 32 tons of litter with the litter crew. We got 1,280 volunteers, 3,880 volunteer hours. Our litter index is still at 2.3, you know, it was almost four when I started this program and 2.3 is excellent and I'm really proud of that and of course, our education, our community workshops, our events, our adopt-a-highway group is at 32. I'll tell you something else that I'm really, I was really shocked at, I'm taking a lot of the court-appointed community service people, they're out of Beaufort County and I'll tell you this, the dockets are backed up so much to where they, you know, they're just giving a lot of these people community service and some of the nonprofits won't take them, but I've got a little system that I use where I don't go out with them or anything, but they have to text me and take pictures and all that stuff, then of course, I get the county or either the DOT to pick it up, but I've had more that have 75 hours, which is a lot of litter and you know, which I'm really glad, in fact, I've got one in Hardyville in the median of 278 now, he's picking up, but that's helped a lot too, I think and our litter fines right now, chairman are at 12.5, so that's really good. Any of y'all that would like to see any reports or anything like that instead of me just telling you, just let me know and I can email you and most, Keep America Beautiful does a lot of my data for me because I have to report to them monthly, so that's, that's where all this data comes from because I have to report everything I do to them and Palmetto Pride, so anyway, but thank you so much, it could not be done without y'all's support. I'm hoping that this year, we will do the litter crew again because they pulled our funding at Palmetto Pride for the litter crew and so you know, that litter crew has meant a lot, it has really meant a lot, so. Any questions?
Ms. Clark?
No, you're doing a good job, just continue.
Thank you.
No question, just keep up all the good work.
It must be very discouraging with Tammy Road, when you do so much and all of a sudden, Tammy Road comes up, so, thank you very much.
We could pick up today and I, you know, in two weeks, it's back out there, but see, we're in the green period, you know, we have two periods, we have the green and the brown and right now, we're in the green, but wait till we get in the brown and I'll be complaining like ever, but anyway, thanks so much and I appreciate y'all and I appreciate y'all giving me the opportunity to help Jasper County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, we have Ms. Janine Bostick with the Jasper County Election Commission, welcome Ms. Bostick.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Lynn, I need you to get with, work with me to get with the legislators, to get rid of those petitions for Saul and Ward.
I was going to call you the county attorney before I could, I was going to be arrested.
I do have a just a short comment on the answer question. We gave it for us, I live in Dupont Lakes and it's a pleasure to come out down the 278, but I notice as soon as I get to Lufden, the roads are not as clean as the roads in Hardyville and it's a pleasure to come out and see that, it really is, so.
Thank you.
Very kind company, I must say. The roads are cleaner in Jasper, but they're much nicer roads in Beaufort County. They got plenty of money over there to get things done and repaid it, so I wish our delegation would help us a little more in Jasper get the same thing.
Again, good afternoon and welcome, Joey, to council.
And Lou.
Good evening, good afternoon, Mr. Kemp, Ms. Clark and Chairman Sols. My budget I'm going to present to you today, I first want to point out, I gave you a copy today of those candidates that will be on the ballot in June, we got a lot of questions from the voters of who's on the ballot, so we broke it down to those that just going to be on the ballot in June and we did inform them, we would have obviously the additional candidates when it comes to November because they advance to the November ballot, okay. As of right now, early voters, we have 532 that voted and absentee ballots received in house was 106 thus far. We mailed out over 200 absentee ballot, but we've only received 106 back in house as of today. There's some information for you. And my budget, okay, and our salary enragers, we just added in per my board at 3% cost of living, we understand that council makes the final decision on the cost of living and pay adjustments, cost of living, so account 2,000, account 2,008, we put some funds in there, the poll workers pay, of course, stays the same and we need to look at purchasing voter registration, a vehicle, maybe a transit van, because right now, we are breaking down our voting equipment to get it transported here out to various drives that we do and it's just wearing and tearing, it already had one Express Vote, which is the machine you put your card in, that was damaged and that was over almost $900 to get fixed, so we need to get something that we can better transport this equipment in to save some money because as you see, I need additional equipment now and I gave you a quote and that's just for three Express Votes and three scanners along with the hardware software program came to 19,000 and I only budgeted in 10,000, so I'm short by $9,000 to get this additional equipment to spread out amongst Margaritaville. So, my last year budget was 473,750, this year, we are asking with all the adjustments, 536,250 that we're asking to try to meet our accommodations. We still are looking for a facility down in our Hardyville area for a satellite office, it is really needed down there, it is really, really needed. Right now, we're doing early voting at First Baptist Church and while the space may be accommodating, the parking is not because that grass, we had rained back on the special primary in 20, April 23rd election, the grass was awful, people were complaining how wet everything was in the parking and the library is just too small and we're going to be back in the library in November and we know November is going to be a huge election and early voting will be 12 days there, so we'll be there Monday through Saturday, 8:30 to 6:00 PM, so if you can help me out again, we're trying to find a facility, if we have to build one.
Do you have any recommendations, Ms. Bostick, on a location?
None.
I mean, I don't.
No, no, the nice little plazas they're building out there, they're nice, but the parking, we would kill them with parking and you would get your phone to ring off the hook, that is just too much.
Have you thought about asking Pastor Eric at?
Monet Life?
Yeah.
Creative.
Creative Church. I mean, that's fine for early voting, but we need a satellite office, okay?
Oh, you're talking about for a?
We need a permanent satellite office, yes, sir, so you know, it's easy to use these facilities for early voting, but like I said, we need that satellite office down there
How much square?
To accommodate the voters on this side.
What type of square footage?
When we talked about square footage, we have mentioned, I think you gave it to Mr. Vaughn, for office down there, do you remember what that was?
David, I don't really remember.
I don't know what it was either, but something similar.
About two or three offices?
I'm sorry?
Two or three offices?
Yes, two or three rooms, but we're going to need storage for the equipment, of course, so you're going to need rooms to store the equipment, be able to get in and out of there and large enough that you have early voting in there as well. Because even my office right now is small, I mean, we got four machines up, November, we're going to have to get at least six or eight in there and it's just going to be tight because you have them five feet away and it's not, that's not going to happen in the office that we're in here locally, so that's an issue as well, hopefully, you know, I've been a director here now 20 years and I've been begging since I've been here to try to make things better, so I'm hoping, you know, it'll get better before I retire, which is really soon. One final thing, I want to ask council to get with me in trying to do, adopt a polling location where the businesses in Jasper will have their workers to get a day off and work, volunteer as poll workers, instead of giving the individual check to the individual, we will give that check to that business for the amount of poll workers that work at a polling location, so that's something, I'll leave some paperwork with Wanda, something Charleston did and I think it's something we could do here in Jasper to get the businesses and I think you work with Chambers, you know, they can give us a list, we can reach out to those businesses and do something like that here in Jasper where we get back to the business instead of the individuals because we are very short when it comes to poll workers. We need over 200 and we might get 105, okay? Any questions?
Ms. Clark, any questions?
No.
No questions?
Yes, when you do early voting, does it have to be in your office?
Yes, one location has to be the office.
Has to be in the office.
Yes, one location has to be at the main office, yes, sir.
It's all right, and thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Anything else, Ms. Bostick?
That is it, I appreciate your consideration.
We appreciate you and all the hard work y'all put in and your board too, thank y'all very kindly.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, we got some time, I know that some of our council members have questions as it regards, as it relates to the budget. Wait on Ms. Kim to get freed up and I think we'll take this time to ask some questions and some items that be of interest. Thank you.
Am I up?
Well, we're going to, you can be, I'm sure you will be, I know some of the council members have questions, so I thought we'd take this time for questions and answers and kind of go through some items, make sure everybody's on the same page and have some discussion, okay?
Okay.
Ms. Brown, if you have anything in particular you would ask me to question.
I do have a couple of questions. And maybe it's more of a educational question for me, but as I've looked from first reading to we're going to third reading tonight, the cash carry forward has gone up about a million from first reading to third reading, can you explain exactly what that is, means?
So, between the first and second reading, we en- So, between the first and second reading, we increased the, um, cash carry forward about nine hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. And it was to offset, primarily to offset the increase in the sheriff, where, uh, he had, uh, the sheriff department had asked for thirty, um, new employees. And after that first reading, the sheriff, we met, and the sheriff determined that they could probably do live with ten new employees, so that offset. There was not really any other place to, to reduce, so we increased the cash carry forward, which comes out of the general fund balance. So it's basically unspent monies that drop down to the general fund balance that then get brought back into the next year's budget.
Okay. Good question.
All right. And I had a couple more, but I can defer for a second, come back to them. I just wanted to get everything together that y'all are found with that.
Mr. Kemp?
Yeah, uh, I think this is for, uh, the attorney's header. Could you explain section ten of the ordinance, please? It also pertains to the cash carry forward.
It's the lapsing funds?
Page four of seven.
He asked about that, for units, plans of the lapsing.
So I was, I was reading something else.
No problem.
This particular section, uh, at the end of the year, some money in each of the departments, many of the departments, is yet unspent because they haven't been able to contract, run the bid proposals, whatever. But the money was already authorized by county council in this year's budget. This allows for, upon request, those monies to be carried forward without being re-appropriated, particularly in the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, under the provisions that we have there, uh, that they have to tell them August first, that that's, they haven't got the money spent for what reasons. Any excess funds left over after that have to go back into the general fund.
Correct. What I'm trying to say is, the other part of it is, if we take it out of the general fund, we have to, that's got to be separate. So how much is general fund money, and how much is money forward? I think it's August of twenty-twenty-three, we have, you have to tell us what is going for, going to be put to the next year.
August of twenty-twenty-four, yes.
And in writing? So we should know that.
We brought it back last year as essentially a budget amendment. It was included in our budget amendment ordinance. This, these lapsing funds were carried forward as a part of that.
But we're doing, this is not, this is not, that's last year's budget, not this year's.
Well, we'll do it again in August.
We do it, have traditionally done a budget amendment after we close the books and get all the reporting in from June thirty. So we give a little bit of time to get it to come back, and then if there's adjustments that need to be made to this year's budget to close it out, that's when that occurs in August.
Now, is that all general fund, or is that just coming forward?
It's the general, it comes from the general fund balance. We have, it's set aside in the, um, in the general fund balance. You can see it as committed. If you look at the June twenty-twenty-three financial statements, it's about seven billion dollars. So that was committed, which is basically the cash carry forward.
And how much do we carry forward this month, this year?
We're at, uh, no, there's no way to put it in here. We are at six million, well, it'll be seven million dollars, because, uh, from the second and third reading, we added another seventy-five thousand, so it's about seven billion.
Yeah, but we already did seven hundred thousand dollars forward in the twenty-twenty-three. That's what, right?
And it falls down, when it's not spent, it comes back, it's uncommitted, it comes back to the general fund balance. And we do it again in August, when, when we bring it to you again.
But, but in that section ten, it seems to be segregated, as you might say. So you have general fund, and you have what's carried forward. All I'm, what I'm trying to get at is, when we do this budget, we should know what's coming from the general fund and what is coming from the previous year. And that's the way I think it's supposed to be done.
Well, that's what, that's what the cash carry forward is. That line item is coming from the previous year.
Yeah, but what items are in the cash carry? There's two different items. One that you've already done, right, and one that's excess. All I'm trying to...
So in August, you will know what the excess is when we do the budget amendment. That's when you know, will know what the excess is.
But you're, but each, like, for example, the, uh, the church street, right? Church Street Grant, you have six hundred and seventy-five thou, six hundred thousand dollars. That's a carry forward. Right, cash carry forward, correct? Right? That's not from general fund, that's carry forward.
Correct.
So that should be separated.
It's going to fall out of the general, it's going to follow out through this year's financial statements, back to the, to the general fund balance, because it was unspent. Then it will be a cash carry forward and committed in going into the next budget year.
Well, can't go to a, that can't go to a general fund, because it's a grant that's specific for something, correct?
That is not a grant. That is the, that is the county's portion, grant match portion.
That's the county portion, okay.
That's the county portion, yes, sir.
I would still like to see, even though we did it in August, to bring it forward here, even make it clearer.
Well, according to this particular ordinance, they have until August fifteenth to do that.
For next year?
Yeah.
For next year?
For this, to do the budget amendment. For the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget.
To go to twenty-twenty-six?
That, pardon me?
To go to twenty-twenty-six?
No, it'll go to the twenty-twenty-five, fiscal year twenty-twenty-five. At least, that's how we did it last year. We did it as a budget amendment to the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget.
Okay. I'm very confused about it, but that's beside the point. Uh, the next one, what determines what grants we put on the, on the, uh, budget and what we dump?
The only, um...
You went to that grant matching?
I don't know. Is it grant match, or is it what particular, are you talking about something in particular?
Well, if we get a grant, let's, uh, we'll go to the airport, that's the simple one, really. We got two hundred and twenty-five, two-point-five million dollars a grant, a matching grant, so we have to produce two-point-five million dollars.
Right.
But it doesn't show up in the airport area.
Correct.
Correct? But the budget is where we...
It shows up in the grants funds, which are a different fund, which is not this fund, which is not the general fund.
But it's part of the budget, right?
Um, it's pro...
The payment would be part of the budget, but that would be a separate fund that you would see in your cap or, I'm sorry, your act.
Yes, that.
Not your general fund budget.
So it's outside of the budget?
It's outside of the general operating budget, yes. The payment is in your general operating budget as a...
Where, where is that? That's under the, uh...
You're talking about the, the grant matches.
No, the bond payment.
The bond payment is what?
The three hundred and fifty thousand.
Correct.
Yes, well, it shows up as a revenue, which is the accommodations tax, and then it shows up as the payment in the airport.
No, no, that's not, that's not that grant. That's the different grant.
Right, but the one that you're talking about is in the grant funds. So when the funds get, when the funds get expended at the end of the year, we reconcile it, and then it goes, it will then be reconciled as a part of that, a separate fund in the act.
Okay.
So the expenditures fall through to the grant, to the grant fund.
But we never see, that, that, what I'm saying is, we never see, that's like a, out in left field.
Well, you see it.
You see it in your audit.
When?
In your audit.
At the end of the year, when you have your financial statement.
That's when you can see the bigger picture. Your, your, your general fund budget is more like looking at your checkbook, but you don't understand the larger amounts that you may be paying for, like your mortgage. You're just seeing the checkbook. You're just seeing the mortgage payment going out. Does that make sense?
Kinda. I just don't, I, it just gets me scared that I have to wait until a year later, almost a year, to get, find out what's going on there, that's all.
You can ask anytime.
And, well, I can ask anytime, but it's not just me. We lose sight of that fact. I'm only the one that asks the question. People are asking me the question, so.
Well, I mean, we can give reports on the grants anytime if the council would like to see that. For the year.
We'll go on to another. We talked about this before. You have the, uh, Ridgeland Fire Department. It's, it's duplicated, so...
It, yes. Apparently, it was in three places, and now it's in two places, so it is, there is a duplication.
So we can take that off, and we can create another bill. We can reduce it another mill.
Two hundred and seventy-six thousand. Well, I will add that the people who, the families in transition, they asked for thirty thousand, that's not in this budget. So the additional, some of those additional funds that, uh, Ms. Bostic just talked about that she'll require, that's not in this budget. So you're right, it can be reduced another mill, but then we have to do, do you, does the council want to include those other items that are not in this budget?
Well, let me just put it this way, the, if you want to put the thirty thousand dollars in, you, what is it, two-seventy, and ours is two-sixty, that's ten thousand, we can do. But anyway, that's something for us to decide.
Mm-hmm. I will add that.
Excuse me?
I was just going to say that there are some additional fees that I've learned of today that will need to be added, just added to that list of fee schedules, the schedule at the back, that the, uh, register of deeds charges, that I was frankly unaware of until today, so those will... That one document would need to be revised.
Do you have one other?
Fees? Oh, I mentioned, uh, the seventy-five thousand dollars, you, the, when the, um, cash carry forward went up, it was nine hundred and forty-six thousand. Between the second and third reading, there was an additional seventy-five thousand, which had to do with cellphone expenditures for the sheriff. The I.T. has taken over all the cellphone expenditures, with the exception of the sheriff department. So I needed to put that in there.
So the sheriff's department is now going to I.T. with the cell phone?
It is not. It is not. It is the only department that is not, so.
Any particular, uh, John's asking questions? No problem, if you want. This is a, this is a workshop, so it can be anything you want. But anyway, I'll just go to the next one. The sheriff's revenue from the airport.
Yes.
That's not right. They shouldn't have it as revenue. We treat it at like an SRO, where we take the money from, we, the money comes in as a revenue, and then we give it to the sheriff, right? But you can't do that in this particular, because we give the revenue, we give the money to the sheriff's department.
We're just basically re, transferring it from the airport to the sheriff.
Yeah, but you can't...
It's being, it's being treated as an expenditure for the airport.
Right.
And then it's being treated as a revenue for the sheriff. It's a transfer.
But how can you have a revenue from an expense? I just don't understand that. So what you're having is, let's say it's one mill, let's say it's one mill, right? If you do it the way you're saying, it's no mill. You don't need a mill. It's free. Because you have revenue, and you're taking it from the expense and putting it into revenue.
So basically, we have to show a way of doing that. Two years ago, when the sheriff, when the council wanted to identify what the sheriff, the security that the sheriff was providing to the airport, it was decided that the airport would pay a fee, essentially, of a hundred and forty thousand dollars, and that that money would then be recognized as revenue to the sheriff to basically offset the cost of what it costs them to have a security person out there. I mean, you can take it to expenditure and payroll, but...
That's the best way to do it, or...
Not really in accounting terms. It's not. So you're taking it as an expenditure for one department, and it's showing up as a revenue in the other.
So why wouldn't you, why wouldn't you take double the hundred and forty, the two-eighty, and then take one of, the hundred and forty of that and put it into revenue? Then you show the expense and revenue.
That, I'm not following you. That's not the way accounting works, so...
I understand that, but it's not the way accounting works, where you have an expense, and you're taking the expense and putting it into revenue. Where's the revenue coming from?
It's an expenditure from one department, and a revenue, it's just like if the county paid, uh, public works for the use of their equipment or something. It would be an expenditure in one department and a revenue in the, showing in the public works department. It's standard accounting, standard budgeting process.
But not in budgeting?
It, it's a standard process.
What you're, then, then you're, what you're doing is, you're creating a hundred and forty thousand dollars, right? Without getting it.
Which is offset by the expenditure in airport, so it's offset. You have a hundred and forty in revenue, you offset it by a hundred and forty thousand in expenditures. It nets to zero. It's just in different departments.
So let's say I have, uh, a fire department. It's a hundred thousand dollars in the fire department. All I have to do is put a hundred thousand dollars into the revenue, and I've got, I've got something what I can do.
Where are you going to get it from?
I don't know. That's what you're, you're telling me it's, that's an accounting change?
You can't just put a hundred thousand dollars in there without taking it from somewhere.
Well, I've, I've already paid for a hundred thousand dollars in the fire department. So I want to take a hundred thousand dollars and put it into revenue. What's the difference?
I'm not following you. It's account, it's accounting. It's a debit and a credit. So that's what we're doing. We're doing double entry accounting. You're taking it as a debit, as an expenditure. You're taking it as a credit for revenue. It offsets, it nets to zero. It's just in different departments. Bottom line, it's zero for the county.
Right. That's what's not supposed to be. Can't be zero. That's, that's what I don't understand. I don't understand, when you have a, a expense, where is the revenue coming from?
The airport. Your tax bill.
Correct.
The, the, the A tax form, whatever the revenue is to the airport.
It's coming from the county.
So...
It's being allocated to the airport to expend it, to pay the sheriff, and it's basically a general entry. It's just that, that, that the council wanted to show...
I understand what the council wanted.
Show what was happening there. So if it's an outside, if it was an outside, um, service, security provider, not the sheriff, you would still see the expenditure on the airport side. The money would still be coming from the county in, in general at that point, and then... Well, yeah, you would. No, you wouldn't show the revenue. You would just show, there would be the expenditure, and then it would go to whomever, you know, whoever that is. So, but it happens to be going to the sheriff, so we're picking it up and showing it as revenue.
All right, Mr. Kemp, let's move on to another question, and if you want to, you can meet with staff to kind of get more clarification, just for the sake of time. Okay. How we, the sheriff asked for thirty people.
Correct.
How do we get, arrive at ten?
We met with the sheriff and his chief deputy and several other members of his staff, and they, because of the, uh, length of time that it takes to find people and to hire people, we determined that it would probably be sufficient to have ten in this year, and then look at the possibility of adding another ten in the next year. But to budget for thirty people, that it was unlikely that would be hired in a single year, didn't make sense.
Well, what are they going to do with the extra? I know about two, what they're going to do with two people. What are they going to do with the other eight?
Uh, they're going to make, as far as I know, they're going to be deputies. And they're being budgeted like, uh, throughout the year, that they would be hires throughout the year, not on day one, not on July one.
All right, okay. Okay. Engineering and, uh, solid waste was over a million, just about a million dollars increase from the previous year. Can you tell me why?
So, um-
Rose is right at the door.
So some of it is just the fact that the landfill fees have increased. So she had a good, I think I brought it back.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
In the report, I think I prepared last year for council, if you go back and review that, you'll see that the, our garbage has increased significantly. The C and D, and specifically the land yard debris is way up. Your household debris is up, I think, about 4%, but we've seen significant upticks in the yard debris and C and D. We're busted at the seams.
Unfortunately, as you grow, that's a cost that nobody thinks about, is what happens to your trash. The county pays for the disposal of all trash, whether it's in the incorporated areas or the incorporated areas.
So that means that waste management, the charge they give me is just for the pickup, not for the delivery?
That's correct. It's not for the disposal.
Yeah, we pay, we pay them for, some pickups, we've had utilized them because we simply don't have enough trucks or drivers to handle our own, and that makes it a little more expensive on that side, but then we still have to pay the tipping as well.
Mr. Kemp was referring to private haulers who pick up individual residents' trash. That changes from time to time, as in municipalities have franchise agreements. You're right. You're paying for that portion, and then the county is paying for the actual disposal payment.
Uh, the increase in pipe, $210,000.
Yes, we haven't, we haven't bought any pipe in a long time. We've got a lot of pipe that is so, that, the rubber type, and it's filled up, basically it's like concrete, and there's no way to clean it out. And so we're having to replace some of it in some of our really low-lying areas, rather than try, you know, the maintenance, we just can't clean it out.
Do we have a project? Is there a project or is specific, so?
There's a whole lot of them, particularly in the Hardyville Levy area, and then the eastern sections of the county. The, the rock, and we are getting that, that funded through C-Fund.
And the central garage has $130,000 for equipment.
Yes, we need some more up-to-date equipment, and some stuff out there is sadly outdated, and for us to be able to maintain and do a lot of our equipment in-house, which is cheaper than sending it out. Or less expensive, shall I say.
What equipment are you going to buy?
Uh, you know, all the new equipment takes computers, and we've got to update that system to check the, I forgot terminology here, but you hook up a computer to check the computer.
Diagnostics?
That's it, yes, sir. Diagnostic.
And the Ridgeland contract, the duplication, we know about that, right?
Yes.
That's all I have right now.
Okay, sir. Any questions, don't hesitate, give me a call. I made a bunch of notes on it, and, you know, tried to be conservative, but also, I don't think we took, looked at actual numbers in the previous years. But, you know, we'll come in as best we can.
Thank you.
The only two other questions I have is concerning Parks and Rec. Just kind of see exactly what those expenditures are going up, between the two, about $500,000. Just clear it up with, with that, and that's all I have.
The Parks and Rec expenditures going up by $400,000?
Uh, 218 and 330.
The park development?
Say that one more time.
Was it, is it a particular line item? I know we increased park development-
Okay.
-in order to get, well, one was hopefully the J C-
J R Y B.
J-
J R Y B.
J R Y B, baseball field that needs some-
Okay, that's included in there, okay.
Yes, and then some bridges at Sergeant Jasper, some other work like that, that needs to be done. Sometimes, you know, you can have a project, sometimes it's just something that comes up and you realize, we need to do this, so.
All right. Other than that, that's all that, that I have.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Ms. Clark, did you, you were good?
I am good, but I do want to say that I want to commend Ms. Burgess and Mr. Fuldrum on the job that they really do on the budget. You all really go through it, and you're trying to make it easy for us to read, and you do the best that you can, so that the people will understand it also. But when we as council member don't understand, we can't relate it to the people. But you all does a good job. I'm proud of you. Every time you're trying to be world around to see where funds go, you can bring them exactly to where it is. So I just want to tell you, keep up the good work today and years to come.
Thank you.
Yeah, good work on the budget. I know what you guys go through to get everything prepared and then working with all the department heads, it's not a easy task on top of everything else y'all are trying to take care of, so thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
It has been a busy year. It has been a busy year.
Been a busy year.
Chief, is anything you wanted to add for your department or anything? Did you have any comments? Are you good?
We'll be happy to, we were aware that it was in duplicate.
Yes.
Again, we're trying to compile, I think, eight bud, eight budgets. I gotta count them out, I think eight budgets. So somewhere within there, yes, we, we probably have some duplicates, and then after the administrative review, we scrub it again, and with the newfound information, we'll go back through and scrub it again.
Well, that's part of what we were talking about, is, is you have that duplicate, $276,000. We've mentioned a few items that were not included in the budget today. You can cut the budget a mill, you could potentially add those or some other, or you could park it for some other use. I just wanted to throw those, those suggestions or opportunities out to you.
We probably need an itemization of what, you've got the board of elections, we've got family in transitions, if the council wanted to have a discussion on either one of those, ask, are you fine with what they asked for to add in the budget? Do you want to cut those? Do you want to add to it?
Well, they were new.
Y'all have any, any, any comment on either one of those?
All of those.
Ms. Clark, for family in transition and the board of elections, did you have, were you fine with what they requesting?
I'm, I'm fine with what they are requesting, but would we be able to cut the mill if we give what they're requesting?
Yes.
What we would end up doing is, if we cut the mill and give them what they request, we would have to work through the cash carry forward somewhat, for the difference.
But we can make that happen. Yes, sir.
Yes.
We, Councilman Ryle and Kemp, the request from the board of elections and family in transition, I wish y'all's opinion on that.
What was the, the difference between the voter registration for theirs?
$946,000.
For the federal's registration?
Yeah, she said she wanted $19,000.
Yes, and we have 10. So it's $9,000.
So it's $900,000.
$9,000, it's about $10,000.
Yeah, 946.
Yeah.
So the total between the two would be about 40.
About 40. A mill is 260, so you would have about 16 against that 40, so there'd be another, was that $24,000, $20,000?
Cash carry, does it make a difference?
Mm-hmm.
Just for my own, why are we, why don't we just look at some of the, the expenses and just cut it down, 1,000, 10,000 here, 10,000, 4,000 here, and rather than take it from?
Well, we have a limited amount of time. If you want to have the budget approved today, tonight, at the council meeting, so that cash carry forward is generally where-
Well, it doesn't have to be-
Had we, had we been able to do that, I would have done that, you know, already, so.
Why don't we just wait? And just let it, let it slide for the next meeting?
We can't. The next meeting's in July, that I know of.
I recommend that we go ahead, we add what they want, since we have it there, put it in the budget, and we go ahead on and approve this budget tonight, because I would like to be here for the approval of this budget, and I may have to have surgery. I don't know. So I don't want to see this budget just keep the can kicking down the road, when we have been through this budget thoroughly, you have had it a month before you even came to council meeting.
So we would, your recommendation is to take the $24,000 from cash carry forward out of the general fund to make up the deficit?
Yes.
Give Ms. Bostic and family in transitions their ask?
And then reduce the mill.
And then we reduce the budget, one mill?
Correct.
Two mill. One mill or two mill?
Well, we've already done one.
We already got one, so it's going to-
So another mill.
That will give us two mills, which will help us with the sales tax referendum and claiming that, and we're able to take care of what the election commission needs and family in transition, and then we should be fine. Everybody in agreement with that?
I am.
Councilman Ryle, Councilman Kemp, you okay? Um, you have? Is that a yes, Councilman Kemp?
Yes.
All right, so I'll make these changes and bring it back to you for the, at the council, at the actual meeting tonight.
Tonight, yeah, and we'll- We want to have a narrative summary of the changes made.
Correct.
Yes, please. I guess we have made it through that. Good questions. We could go on into executive session and, yeah, mine's five o'clock. We'll go ahead and do that, and we'll just keep, keep turning. So in compliance with the freedom of information?
Hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry.